Good, okay. Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call for the regular meeting of the Public Utilities Commission. Today's Thursday, June 12th, and time is 3:31. We've got the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation that are not indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any public input? Public, any correspondence? No correspondence. Okay, so with the minutes here, the first one is the minutes from a regular meeting of April 10th, 2025, I would accept a motion for approval. Which one was the second? That would be Pete's on the second? Okay, Richard's first. Let's see. So Dino was on here, but we have a quorum, the three of us. Okay, if that'll fair minds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And a opposed, we come out of abstention. Motion carries. We also have the minutes for the regular meeting of May 8th, 2025. Now, looks like, yeah, we can do the same thing, accept a motion for approval. And now, I'll make the motion for approval, we have Dino as a second. It looks like restraint was not here, and we still have a quorum for the others, so. Any, any questions about the minutes? You know, if I'm in mind, it's all in favor, say aye. Aye. I have one abstention. Motion carries. Let me run along, financial report.
Financial report. Water department is in a surplus position of 290,000, sewers in a surplus position of 349,000, as we talked about. Especially sewer. Danbury hasn't billed us, but Danbury does, we keep our deficit. That all comes, sewers ends every year right now, our deficit position on what we bill out, and it all has to do with how we do the sewer assessments. You can notice it under, even when we talk to the budget, we still budget like $850,000 of sewer assessment billing, where we only bill out like 350, but we collect like a million. So it's just the difference of cash coming in versus what we actually build. So, right now it looks good, but obviously there is that piece of the, we have a Dr. Bill from Danbury to the sewer for this year. We usually get them in October. We got last year, last August, so it's been 10 months, we got the last one. We were having some discussions the other day of, it's what company's our budget, how we're going to afford it. So, but we'll probably talk a little bit about more of that when we get to the budget. The sewer billing number is actually down too, so that's making this number look a little spooky too, because we don't have the sewer assessment billing, because of all the work Paul has been doing to try to get on PDS. The sewer assessment billing went out late, and it hasn't come through on any reporting, because the reporting's not dying out, so I'm on the reporting, I can't look at it. So, feels like we get close, and then we get further away, then we get close, and further away on that, so we're worried for that. But of the stuff that, like, in normal stuff, it's the stuff we talked about many times, water account is a mess, it's not midway, but it's the road.
Midway.
Is it midway, where they had the bad break?
Yes. Yeah. Midway, right.
So that made that one account, really, that's the total overall, without the pieces there.
With the midway break, with the first midway break, with the top of it, with the car went the whole?
Yeah.
Did we ever get, did you ever see the number that they were asking for from, for rental car?
I haven't. I know you constantly answer my stuff, but all that stuff goes through.
I've been looking for that number, and nobody seems to have it. I asked the person, I'm sure it's not very much money. They did get some money back, I think, for the car, but the rental car itself was never covered for them. I'd love to know what that number is. But, okay, you haven't seen it, then. See if we can find it for the next meeting, I'll let you talk about it.
I'll email our input into the next thing.
Okay. Awesome. All set, was it?
Yeah, sorry, boring, but it's all the same.
No, it's good, it's good.
By June, we talked a lot about the issues.
Right. Okay, so before us right now, we have a total to approve for invoices of 223,543.38. I would accept a motion to approve those invoices. Do you have a second?
Yeah.
Recognize his trade, with a second. Any discussion? Tom, anything, it looks like the usual stuff.
It's the usual, Kovacs is monthly, Wright Pierce has two for the, for the Bergstrom, they were, they were slightly late on last month, so I did not include it in last month, so it carried through to this month.
Okay. Well, anything else remarkable?
Ninety-four percent?
Yeah.
Oh, that's nine eighty-five.
Yes, we'll talk to the directors, maybe we'll ask them more about when they're gonna be ready. Any further discussion on the invoices? The motion on the table, that'll fair minds, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? Or no extension, motion carries. Okay. Next up, 48 and 50 Nashville Road, for the proposed sewer allocation. I believe, I guess we'll turn it over, do you want to say anything before we start?
Yeah, I wanted this on the agenda, they've come in now, they, before P and Z, I think they scheduled the P and Z public hearing, or I believe it's the 27th of June. Sewer allocation, of course, is required approval by PUC, and I didn't want to just leave it for like the July meeting while they were into it or far into it, I wanted to at least have Luke come in, he's with the engineering company. Have him give a presentation. At, as far as today, a decision can be made, or could be tabled until next month, as the commission, you know, wants.
Okay, with that, I'll turn it over to Luke.
Sure, very good, I'm gonna do a share screen. Just let me know if you guys can see this.
And we see it?
Yep. Okay, perfect, so, so again, thanks, Tom, my name is Luke Morrow, I am a senior project manager with solely engineering in Monroe. We're working with Vessel Technologies for a proposed multifamily development at 48 and 50 Nashville Road. It's going to be a total 75 unit, five-story building, consisting of nine two-bedroom apartments, and then the rest of the 66 units would all be studio apartments, if you will. So, we're here today seeking a sewer allocation approval, or I'm here today, seeking a sewer allocation approval for the development itself. Going back and forth with Tom a few times, I think generally speaking, the town of Bethel utilizes, you know, pretty standard sewer demand for, for a residential bed, for a single bedroom unit of about 100 gallons per day, so at 84 total bedrooms for the building itself. The requested sewer allocation would be 8,400 gallons per day for the entire site. So that would be for both water, the water demand, and for the sewer demand as well. There are public utilities located within Nashville Road, based on available mapping. I believe there's an eight-inch sewer main, and I don't have it documented right here, but I believe there's an eight-inch or a 10-inch water main as well in Nashville Road.
Twelve, actually, Luke.
Twelve, okay, 12-inch main, so. So, proposed, proposed connections themselves on-site, based on information provided by our, our mechanical engineer, it would be a six-inch fire main from the site with a tap over here. Put on the site, and then also a, you know, gate valves, and then also a domestic water meter for a three-inch water service, so that would run up the driveway here, you can see we have a fairly windy driveway to make grade at the top of the hill here. And then that would tie in to the building in the top of corner where utilities are located, and then also, because we're up on a hill, we do have the benefit of using a gravity sewer flow out to the line that is in Nashville Road. So, again, gravity main, six-inch PVC from the building itself, you know, running down the driveway, and then a connection point into the existing eight-inch main within Nashville Road. There were some calculations provided by our MEP, those are kind of, those are based on MEP, I'm sorry, those are based on like the MDC and the Connecticut Public Health Code, which tends to kind of overestimate. So, like I said, in talking with Tom, you know, the 100 gallons per day per bedroom unit is, is what Bethel seems to use, so again, requesting allocation of 8,400 gallons per day for the site. We did do some calculations in terms of what we thought the peak demand would be, so taking that 8,400 gallons per day, and kind of dividing it into what that flow rate would be per minute, and that's assuming a 12-hour day. You know, people are sleeping, and they're out at work during the day as well, so that results in about 11, 11 to 12 gallons per minute, and then if we apply a peaking factor of about four. I think at any given time, we wouldn't expect, at the busiest times of the day, to have more than 45 to 50 gallons per minute, you know, for an ultimate maximum dam, demand for, you know, a minute or two throughout those busy morning periods, and then the rest of the day, you know, probably around 10 to 12 gallons per minute would be our typical, average demand for the development itself. So, with that, I know I threw a lot of information at everybody, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
Luke, you, you had a meter pit down at the road, I think, right, where it's tapped?
That is correct, yep.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we would have wanted that based on the length of the service.
Okay. Yep, and I assume, Tom, do you guys typically meter fire service as well? I know some of the larger public utility companies do, but are you guys just typically metered the domestic?
Domestic.
Okay, so then, so then as depicted, it should be, you know, we'll have to get the details from you guys, but we do have, we are showing a meter pit there for the domestic service.
That would be a separate tap also, that wouldn't come off the fire line, that would be a separate tap.
Correct, yep, correct, we're showing two separate taps.
Okay.
Yep.
And you say it's just a six-inch fire service?
Correct, yep, six-inch fire, and then a three-inch domestic.
You, you're having a hydrant at the building?
We, we have not gotten formal comments yet from the fire marshal, but we are presenting a fire hydrant located here at the south, well, it's southwest in the plan view, it's actually the northwest corner of the building. But I, as I understand it, I think the fire department, the fire marshal in the building department will review, let us know if the one is sufficient. There is a hydrant along, near the frontage over here, along, it's over here, you can see it, along the road, but because it's such a long windy driveway, we felt that was appropriate to put a hydrant up at the top.
Yeah, that's based on their design, I don't know what kind of design they have for fire, I think, do you know, dude, did your MEP have the fire flow, it was not a big number, I think.
The fire flow that they were estimating is 74 gallons per minute at 59.15 PSI, and again, you know, that's based off of ideal conditions, they haven't gone through a full construction document design with the sprinkler contractor yet, but that's, you know, based off of similar sized projects in, in the size of the building, and in the slope up in the street, that's what they had calculated in terms of the fire demand.
Although not necessarily related to water, what's the total square footage of that area?
The total square footage of the building is, the footprint is, just call it 12,000 square feet, so over five stories, that would be 60,000 total.
Tom, what do we stand on our allocation right now? Like what, what do we have for that area? I know we said another sewer capacity study yet.
It's the Paul Street area.
Okay.
So we're, you know, I, I meant to look at the bank to see what we have.
We're in the bank.
Yeah. Yeah, where we were drawing down, we had 200,000 in the bank in 2016.
Right.
I think we're probably on the order 120 left in the bank.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, don't go hold me to that, I didn't, I meant to look, but I did not get a chance.
We only, we're waiting on the sewer allocation study that we're doing next, but that's not, okay.
So this would be like five or six percent for the wood.
The, when, when the study was done in 09, they, they looked at, based on zoning.
Yep.
So they looked at undeveloped properties, they assumed like 20%, you, you would not be building on for roads and such. So they came up with, I think, a flow of like, they came up with like 13 units. At, they, they were using 193 for a house, so they, they had about 2,700 gallons per day. I, I made it 27, because I added in number 48. This, this property includes 48, which is currently, which will be demoed, I assume?
Uh, that, that's likely the intent, yes, yep.
So, with, with the 13 from number 50 and 48, you're looking at 14 units? So I, I came up with, I think it was like 2,700 gallons, based on zoning.
Right. We had spoken about, we don't have to act on this today, we don't have Melanie here.
Correct.
So I might want to plant on table, let, just do questions and if Melanie can be here too.
Is that where a man gonna be looped? You looping that back on that fire side, or it's gonna be dead end?
We, normally we don't loop for something this small, however, if it's, if it's required, then so be it. But typically, typically for something, a development this, this small, you know, when we're talking about like a larger, a larger big box store, or, or a plaza, then we typically normally do a fire loop around the building, but normally for something of this size, we don't typically loop it.
So are you, what are you talking, a 13-hour system?
Say again?
A 13-hour system for that?
A 13?
That doesn't all wood frame, right?
No.
No, this is not, not wood frame. No, it's, it's like a concrete, and then, and it's actually, the, the units are kind of prefabricated, concrete and composite, starting where I don't believe there's wood at all.
The, the way I understand, they, they bring them in and stack them.
Correct.
Have they done that before?
Yeah, they stack, they, they have the center corridor, they stack them side to side, and they stack them up, yes.
Yeah, I, I think holding on a decision, I spoke to Dave at P and Z, I think they were looking to do another meeting with the, with the land use and, and the, and the departments prior to the public hearing.
Yep.
So, whatever.
I think they were aiming for next week, Tom, that's what I was told, I believe.
Holding on a, on a decision today, I think is fine, our next meeting would be early July, I think it's 10th or 12th.
Okay.
And you would still be in your P and Z window anyway.
Okay. That way Melanie can weigh in.
And that was my thought, this way, get it to you a little bit early, and then we can kind of go with it next time.
The 10th, July 10th is the next.
Okay.
Do you gentlemen have any more questions for this round?
What's the charge for the, if they're looking for 5400 gallon, oh, what would that charge be for, what for the sewer allocation?
Oh, we do, it, it usually comes down to, it's usually 50 cents, it's usually half of what the flow is. Sewer allocation's gonna be on the order of, say, 4,200, and then the sewer permit and the water permit are gonna be based on $500 per unit. So you're looking at 75 units, you're looking at whatever, 75 times.
Thirty-seven, thirty-seven, five, I think.
That would be for water, and then same for sewer.
Seventy-five thousand altogether.
Basically.
Oh, okay.
And then you said the sewer allocation fee was about 4,200, is that what you had said?
Sewer allocation, yeah, then they have a formula, but it worked out to end up being 50 cents per gallon, you know, so.
Gotcha.
It went back into 4,200.
Gotcha, so about probably 80 grand all in for all the fees.
Basically, yes, and my, and that would be, I don't put the dollars in my comments to P and Z, but I do think that sewer, water, and sewer allocation permits would be required.
Okay. Fair enough.
Just so you have an idea.
Then as far as consideration goes, I make a motion that we table 48 and 50 Nashville Road, multifamily residential development, proposed sewer allocation till the July 10th meeting. For a second? Okay, we got Pete for second, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good one, take care.
Thank you, Luke.
Thank you.
Okay, water sewer budget.
All right, so the, maybe we talked about, yep. The meeting we talked about, the water sewer budget, Tom and I met to go through what's different, and then we met to go through it. Two biggest differences you'll see, and one is health insurance, so since our last meeting, the county switched carrier for health insurance, so instead of being an 11% increase in health insurance line, we're gonna hold it flat. So that's obviously a big difference. So, in like real dollars, like the water department was gonna be this. This next deal.
No, this is what Chelsea gave me.
Because the hospitalization looks like it's up.
Hospitalization, I, I, I'm looking at 240, 831.
Oh, that's, yeah, 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 I was thinking that was the prior budget, sorry.
Yep, the far, the far right-hand column.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
So you kept it flat?
Yeah, it was like a $24,000 difference for water, and like $17,000 for sewer, but obviously they're flat now, supposed to be. On the other parts that, like, I kind of look at, I don't think we really had any changes, other than on water, we had another billing, so the billing of water use budget that we're looking at dropped some.
Yeah, the revenue side dropped.
Yeah. So I think initially we were supposed to do 3.2, and you lowered it to 3,991, based on the most recent information we have. Tom, do you want to talk about the adjustments to capital, and then we can talk about what it did to the bottom line?
Yeah, yeah, so I, I, I made some adjustments to capital, I took a couple of projects that we were proposing, and pushed them off until next year, we left them on there, so you, you see the capital projects that are kind of highlighted in green, that's basically the, the, the DWS, so if you look at the capital.
Yeah, it's the highlight.
Oh, it's not highlighted, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Those first four items would be basically the Bergstrom and the SCADA, and, and, and we would be getting reimbursed from the state, so you'll see those numbers match coming in on the anticipated loans and grants. So really, I, I cut back, and I have the midway project, I reduced from 250 to 220. And I did all of that so that we can keep the tran, so we can keep a positive number on the transfer allocation. So with, with, with those adjustments to capital, and the adjustment to the revenue, we've left ourselves basically with a, with a net even budget.
Yeah, so if everything gets exactly as budgeted, water would bring in like $6,600 more in billings than what we spend and expense.
Now, that, that's, go over one column.
Oh, yeah, 230 bucks, I keep looking at the rock column.
Yep, yep, yep.
Go try and find the columns, I had it mixed with the invoices, because I don't want to send.
Yeah.
All right.
So we'll, we'll, we'll get a number for midway from the contractor, and I'll, hopefully he'll be able to do everything we're asking for, for 220, if not, we'll see what 220 buys us. So it's, and we knew this was coming, with, with Bergstrom getting completed, and with the principal and interest that are gonna hit, we knew we were gonna be lean as far as capital going forward, at least for, for a couple of years.
Yeah, it's just to remind everybody, so Bergstrom, we're gonna start, we anticipate to start paying the debt payments on it in November 25, so it's a $316,000 increase to the budget just for that. So. And the other, the outstanding ones are all flat, so it's, it's all, all new expense, but that's why we went up eight and a half percent. And we knew the first couple of years that eight and a half percent were to kind of just take the Bergstrom debt on, and this year, I think the initial was, the eight and a half percent wouldn't necessarily cover the Bergstrom piece. Is because we were supposed to start paying for Bergstrom earlier, but Bergstrom, because it got delayed to be done, it delayed us paying for it too. Initially, it was supposed to start in August, so if you look at that, we're paying like 25 grand a month, a couple more months, it's like 75 grand, you know, it's a big difference. But we knew when we planned out the eight and a half percent, that it wasn't gonna be enough year one and two, the goal is to get it to year three, without doing like a 25 and then two zero, you know, like, just to phase it in. So, that's the water side.
You see salaries are basically, they're flat?
So salaries are flat for the operators, they're for new hires. So, the, they are on a contract, the contract goes up roughly 2%, but when you have newer guys on steps, it's made up for it. When I looked at it, I think it was within a couple hundred bucks, so it just kept it flat. So, because it's, some of its timing of like, the new hires don't make as much, but then the time, the timing of when they pass certain certifications for their contract, they get raises. So it's not as simple as going on that salary line, overtime can vary a lot, obviously, but the salary line, if the guy tests in October and passes, he gets a raise, because now he's a level two. If he doesn't take it till January, and I'm making up the time, so I don't know, he doesn't take it till January and passes in January, he doesn't get anything, that additional piece of January. So it's not as simple as just going, here's what the person makes, because there are pieces of it. But because they're new hires, and they're not at top level, and they have steps, and they have the level they're hired at, that's what's kept it flat.
Tom, you're comfortable with chemical supplies, no having any increase at all?
No, I, I'm hoping, what we're buying right now for maple, we're buying barrels, Bergstrom, we're gonna be buying bulk, so the cost per gallon on the hypo is gonna come down, same with the ortho.
When will the SCADA project be finished if it passes?
Uh, they were, they, they, they were putting in like about an 18-month.
Well, not this budget, next one.
Correct.
And then hopefully no more big projects for one.
No. No, it's done, most of them, I think, the big ones. Do you end on?
Done.
If I'm not done, then I'm done. You want to talk sewer, or do you want to vote on, and then vote on them as a whole, or do you want to just finish with water and then move on?
What did they do last time, did we do it separate?
No idea.
Okay, let's do it separate.
I think you did them separate last year.
Yeah, separate makes sense to me. Uh, I think the only other question, we, I know we talked about with revenue, we have already talked about revenue, we talked about I think the thing that came up, we were talking about before in revenue, was just the fact that we, we don't necessarily go after a percentage, like we, we talked about, opened that number a little bit or something.
Yeah, but so the way, like, when we do the mill rate, the general fund, we have a taxable base.
Right.
Right, and there's some changes to it, because this is based on use. I base the budget on actuals, of what we actually build out, so in essence, by doing that, we are basing it on what the actual collection base is.
Okay.
I know, like, we talked to the tax law through this week, it's, they're probably a little overdue on doing some notices for mountain payment for water and sewer.
Did we get that number, I remember?
Yeah, it was a couple hundred thousand, it was like 200,000. So, I talked to her Tuesday night, was the last time I talked to her about it, and she said, yeah, it's been pushed aside a little bit with all the technical issues they've been having. Right, you gotta remember, even before the UDS changed, they're having problems with Tyler trying to get the sewer assessments, now they're switching accounting softwares. But it's gotten to the point that, even though she's still having those issues, that's getting brought up to the front a little bit, and I think they're gonna do some notices of lean.
He's intent to lead, she called it.
Yeah, do them soon, before the rules change.
So we'll probably be out with, with some spray paint soon.
The, I don't know if the bill passed, but there's a bill that was in the legislature that curtails some of the amounts that we can lead on, yeah.
Yeah, looking through the, I scrolled through the list, there was some pretty significant numbers, which obviously then, the longer we go, and the bigger the number gets, the harder it is to get them to then have all the money.
Sure.
So, and we got.
The thing is, we have a lot of flexibility to do a payment plan.
Yeah.
If we get them in on a payment plan, then we don't ship the water off.
I think the last time we did, shut off.
Yeah.
The other problem
The other problem is sewer accounts could be not our water.
I know. The question is, can we like tell them to get rid of this somewhere else? No, I understand.
So I know we put in an increase on the water price, but this is 20%.
So.
Over our last year's budget.
The 25, but when we built the 25 budget last year, remember that we had just done a ton of MIU changes? We didn't bump up the budget number that much. So this number here is 3,001, is eight and a half percent over what we filled in 25. 24's number was a mess because of all the MIUs.
So you're comparing it to the 2, 2, 2, 2, 562. I think that number was.
That's only seen it compared to.
Yeah, that number was.
So but if you look at the controller report from today, the billable for 25 is 2.8 million. So if you look at the 2.812, when you back out the sprinkler and hydrers, because that doesn't go the eight and a half percent increase, which is like 374 of the 8.2, that's when you get to the 3.091.
Okay, got it.
So, uh, but if you look at yeah, the budget number, like we blew past the budget number for water this year, but we had no idea because we had so many estimates in it.
Right past that. Yeah. I got jet. How much, how much revenue did we pick up after the change orders?
It seems to be a significant amount. Cause if you look at the 24 actual um, was 2.2 million and we brought in 2.8. But some of that is there were some credits in that 24 that brought it down. And then so it's, there was a lot of accounts that were estimated for way too long.
A lot of, yeah.
So. Yeah. And it's also one of the reasons that it seems like every month on the old business, and probably will come in a while, will be MIU. Talk about we're wrapped. We don't end up back there.
Yeah, right.
You know?
Okay, so.
The, did you mention, so the other thing that you, one of the things you pushed off was initially in the caper of towards the vehicle.
Vehicle, yeah.
Pushed up 26, 27.
Yeah, yeah. There are a couple of projects I pushed just because I had to keep water in pot.
Yeah.
Right. Any further discussion, Joe?
Just, uh, what about the water main maintenance? Did you want that up?
Really, this past year was an outlier. So if you look at over time, I think I did bump it some on.
Yeah, you have five grand.
Yeah. I, I always kind of look at mains and services and add them together and, and we're usually around 100 grand between the two. And, and, and where you, you know, usually one's up and one's down in any given year. But I mean, we had the main break that was under railroad tracks on Greenwood. That year was an outlier. And then what happened on midway this year was an outlier. The other years we've been in that ballpark.
Fortunately, it seems like every other year, right? Cause under the railroad was three years ago.
No, that might've been 2019, Cal. It was before.
And then the following year, what did, what did collapse? And it was in the middle of winter.
Yeah, it was.
Well.
Okay. Can, can we get numbers on these pages in the future?
Didn't she, uh, oh no, she didn't do them all though. Yeah, we should be doing that.
Water, you should be looking at three pages and, and I believe.
Yeah, but I think I ate one.
Alright. I make a motion that we approve. Make sure I get this right. 4,921,904 dollars for the 2025 to 2026 water budget. Grab a second. Hey, for the discussion. Without that, I'll try your minds all in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Any pokes? Let's talk sewer.
So high part of sewer is exactly the same. The hospitalization is down because we switched carriers for the process. We did make some, we did adjust the contract to services city of Danberg the last time we saw. We talked earlier about we haven't got a bill for them in a while. So it's talking, meeting with Tom and Dan the other day. Our concern is because we don't have information, if we just keep it flat, at some point we're gonna have a big jump because things don't usually get cheaper over time. So based on no other information other than let's bump it up 5% just to keep it moving in the right, in the wrong direction, but the right direction for what it's probably. We did go up $50,000 in that. Tom made some changes to capital projects, which why don't you talk about that? And then we'll talk about the transfer out.
Alright, well, the, the reason for the changes was the transfer out. So we're, we're in a deficit. And, and if you, and based on the projects that I'm proposing, um, we have some, the one that kind of came upon us, well, we've known about it for a little bit, but haven't done anything with it is the Paul Street roof. The last heavy rains, I think we had more leakage going in there. So it's, you know, that building is, I'm, I'm, I'm guessing, maybe you guys know if that roof's ever been done. Um, or is that the original roof? It quite well could be the original roof. So the last quote I had was from a couple of years ago. It was on the order of 100 grand. So I don't have a good number from, from the guy who's been looking at it. He wants to get some testing to see if there's any asbestos containing materials. So I got 125 in there as my, my guesstimate at this point. Then the other number I'm throwing out in there is continuing with lining pipe. Uh, we just did the sewer sanitary sewer evaluation survey from sub area 13. So I was just trying to keep us moving in terms of lining pipe as needed. So I just have a $300,000 number in there, which, um, again, our transfer out, we're in a deficit of 263. So I know Brad had mentioned at the last meeting sewer has money in reserve. We could basically do a transfer and keep these projects. And if we wanna not overextend ourselves, push the the, the pipelining to a subsequent year. But I'd be inclined to just, if we have the money in reserves, we go ahead and use it.
Yeah. So the sewer departments had like over $9 million. Obviously at some point, by this point, if we talked like five years ago, we would've been like, we wouldn't have that cash and we would've paid down what we owed Danbury for the plant. And we would have a loan out there for the balance of it, right? Danbury hasn't slowed to get us information and ask for any money. So that money's just there. In essence, we have a fund balance for sewer because that money's sitting there. We haven't done any rate changes because we don't really know what the final number is on that. So the capital items is pretty much what you'd be buying from that cash resort, reserve. The way we've been doing these water sewer budgets, we do it as a, we transfer some of our money in the bank into the budget to do the capital. So it's kind of what we're looking at. It seems kind of silly to push off something that needs to be done for sewer because we haven't raised the rates to make up for that while we're sitting on money. At some point, we may be sitting here going, if I did the eight and a half for water, we should've done something for sewer because at some point we may need to bump it up, but sewer typically has been making money, cash at least.
January.
Yeah.
We were talking about it.
And, and I, I would at least consider get rid of, getting rid of the declining block that we have. We, we build a certain rate per gallon, per thousand gallons uh, between 6,000 and I think it's 65,000. Then the, then the rate actually goes down if you use more than 65,000. On the water side, we phased that out over like a five year period. And we got those, those per thousand gallon costs to be the same. Even if we don't raise the rate, I would, I would suggest at least getting rid of that declining block. And anyone who's using more than 65,000, I, I don't think we want to, you know, give a break, you know, if we want to try to, you know, make conservation, you know, a thought and, and a habit, then I, I don't think it's a declining block is, is where we should stay. So that's for another day, but if, if we do look at doing something rates wise, I'd at least consider doing that as a minimum.
So and just like we kind of talked about with going up on the city of Danbury piece of it. Even though that piece is coming, we don't necessarily know what it is. Without setting ourselves up for having to do a bigger increase at some point, maybe part of the conversation is depending on what we think that would bring in that difference. Maybe if we put a small number out there to just even 3%, if we look at what we bill out on sewer use, 3% of almost $3 million is a non grant. It's, you know, like.
Yeah. Well, so we know it's coming. I mean, we, we know it's ballpark 14 or 15 million.
Yeah, there's a bill coming.
We got about nine million in the bank right now for that or, or whatever. I know we need to hold some back, but.
It's hard to blame. It's been just wrong.
Yeah.
Yeah. And they haven't.
Yeah.
They'll send us a bill for the regular.
The annual.
And the reason sewer has so much money, because this is gonna come due at some point too. It's not just like that's gonna, right? Free money sitting there. That money's sitting there because of all of you that did the sewer assessments. Some of those people that got a $20,000 bill and say, I don't want to pay interest on that. If I got money in the bank, they cut us a check for 20 grand. Or a lot of times we see people pay off their sewer assessment when they're gonna, going to sell the house. Because if they still owe 10, they clear that to make it a fun less than to talk about when they're selling their house.
They pay off their 20 year assessment or their 10 years remaining assessment in one shot.
Yeah. But our outstanding debt still exists. We did, because we refinanced it um, on the debt piece, which we talked about last time. The debt went from 1.5, 1.05 to 985. So it dropped by $65,000. And that's all because we refinanced it. So otherwise the transfer out number would be higher, transfer in, in this case it would translate. But you know, like those bills continue I think for 10 more years, some of those, because even though that project was finished right around the time I started in 11, I think the last one was finished in like 12 or 13. You guys probably know better than me.
But most of them 20 year.
I think most, I have the whole schedule I can look up.
Okay.
Yeah, but we waited a long time for the last ones to get done too. So.
Yeah, and then never did four.
Yeah. So on some, there's probably, that last one's probably still 15 years. 16, 16 years, so it ended with.
Those ended 2035.
10 more.
Uh, budget wise, I think nine really was around. Uh, 10, because it's 26 to 35. It does go down a little bit every year. Like, uh, 26 is 985, then it goes to 950 to 910. Um, so it drops 30 grand a year. So like the out year 2035, sewer department owes debt of 560. Because obviously as your principal drops, your interest on that principal drops. But again, the payments stop. So.
Okay. That was it. No, we won't be able to see that. He might. What's that? You'll be here to see it in 10 more years. You'll be.
Just to give everybody a little bit of peace of mind, I'm talking about there's like $9 million in the sewer bank account. That outstanding debt with interest and everything is eight. So right now, even if we said, whoa, that money's for that, we still have over a million dollars in the bank for sewer. Sewer still does pretty well, not just because of sewer assets.
But then we just have to turn around and borrow the whole amount again when they finally come up with.
Why pay interest on it and sit on money?
Yeah. Yeah, that's the important thing. It's just, that's why I think getting into January, when you think about it, starting to build that up because we know we're gonna be about five or six million short. Well, actually seven, depending on how you look at it, because we're not gonna blow that whole nine million on it. We have to keep money back in reserve. So. Alright. Any further discussion on the sewer budget? With that, I move that we approved 4,000,000 even uh, for the town of Bethel sewer budget for 25, 26. All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Not much case. MIU replacements?
Uh, last month we were down to 99.
Woohoo!
You know, again, it's going to slow. Again, we, um, we probably had about 25 service orders, including the MIU. I use and stuff like that, but you know, it's, we're getting stragglers, but they're, they're coming in.
A lot better than where we started. Good job.
Was there, uh, any increase since the last, um, bills?
There was a few. I, I went through them and, and, uh, you know, a few were new ones, but.
Excellent. Do you see capital project status?
Alright, so, um, I'll, I'll give you the, the highlights of what we've just done. Pay level's at 85%. I talked about a change order last month for 7,700 for rotometers. We rescinded that. We looked further into it and we don't need them. So uh, that's, that's in our favor. We're completed this month. Uh, we did quite a bit. Uh, so the water main, the backwash tank, the filter tanks inside the building, all of the face piping that goes along with the filter tanks um, and the recycled backwash tank have all been pressure tested, flushed, disinfected, and have all passed bacteriological. We also got the VOC results, which are good for the, uh, the tanks. They've done a bunch now with site grading, looming and seeding has started. Um, we've installed the well pump and motor. Uh, we've started up the backwash pumps, uh, completed the wiring and the floats for the wastewater pumps. Uh, inside plumbing for hot and cold water and gas piping. They've painted the chemical rooms. They've installed the chemical tanks and the, and the grading. So they're gonna get going, uh, pretty soon here now on the, on the piping and the, uh, uh, pumps for the chemicals. Couple of things have come up recently. One, I, I kind of got a surprise, uh, uh, letter from DEEP. So we have a diversion permit, which allows us to take the water. One of the conditions in there that we had to have it done within three years. The permit was from 2019. So they've not notified me that this thing expired. I, I thought there's, there's kind of two conditions they talk about. You gotta have the construction done in three years. Or the activities associated with it have to have been started. Basically, I forget the exact wording. So I took it as us starting the construction contract to get the thing going counted as us getting started. And they take that piece of it as no, you gotta be diverting the water by that time. So bottom line is we've got a file for a new permit, which in talking to the guy from DEEP, he's gonna kind of help us move it along. We've already gotten the diversion application and all the backup studies that were done at the ready. We have to kind of update a few of the paragraphs and, and things. We'll get a new submittal to them. So I've been working with Marius on that. He's more or less had like more of an intern doing a lot of the paperwork. So they're, we're trying to keep the, their number down on getting this thing put together. We still gotta go out to a notice in the paper. And we'd still be subject to, um, any kind of a public comment. There's a 30 day public comment period. So the DEEP guy thinks we should be able to get it turned around within probably a couple of months, give or take. So we should get that thing filed here probably within the next week or so. So it's kind of an operational thing. If they had told me a year ago, if they had told me six months ago, we would've had it. So we're just kind of going through the exercise of getting it again.
Okay.
Not anticipating any problem with it, but it's just one of those things. Couple of things have come up recently, I, uh, that I've asked for, for them for a couple of changes. So I, I'll give you the, the highlights. In front of the building, they had along the west side of the building, they had sidewalks that extended to where the chemical fill pads were. The rest of the front of the building was just gonna be stone. I kind of like the idea of it looking a little bit more uniform. And you got the slope of the roof where the drainage is gonna come off. I'd rather see that just hitting the concrete than the stone. So I asked them for a change order on additional sidewalk in front of the building. So I haven't approved it, but we're at the point of, do we want to approve it or not? I'm inclined to just go ahead and, and get that one approved. That one's on the order of 7,300. That one's on the order seventy three hundred. I asked them for. An additional T and valve on the chemical piping. I would like us to be, have the ability. To use the transfer pump, which is gonna take water from the storage tank and refill the day tank.
Yeah.
I wanna cut in a T with a valve, so we can fill car, uh, carboids. If we need chemicals at Maple. We'd be able to fill our own barrels. And then not have to buy barrels, we could use the, the chemicals we have in storage. That change was like se- um, seven hundred and sixty bucks, not, not a biggie. Um. One other thing we saw on the piping. On the backwash piping that's gonna go to the waste tank, on that line before it drops down through the floor and goes underground to the tank, there's a check valve. Which would be holding back that tank from coming back in.
Right.
Um. It makes sense, cut in a valve, a gate valve on either side of that. Case we had ever had to do maintenance on that check or clear that check. So I actually went ahead and, and authorized them and went ahead and had that done. That, that change order was, um. Fifty two hundred bucks for the two valves installed, they had a cutout piping and. Um.
What size valve?
Six inch. Six inch, um. I'm looking at a change, uh, I'm looking at a no cost. Change to reorient some of the fence there. The recycled tank area doesn't have fence completely around it, there's like a little. Piece of fence up at the top on that slope, which doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. Um, so I looked at where I can save some fence in the back, behind the building, they're running the fence kinda. Staggered like this out where the tree line is. Okay? We could bring the fence and he could do a straight shot right across from where the well is. To where the generator is, and I can save. About sixty, seventy feet of fence there, and I can save. A hundred and forty feet of fence he wants to put kinda more up at the top of that slope. I can save about two hundred feet, and I think with. Adding fence around that recycle tank, it's about a wash, it's about a hundred and ninety feet of fence. So I threw that at them today, see. If they agree that there's gonna be no increasing cost for that.
Yeah, your yard maintenance will be a lot lower.
Yeah, you got your toes.
One other thing that's coming that we're gonna need to authorize, um, it was kind of a chicken or the egg, okay? We did these specs in twenty twenty two. Didn't know if Skater was gonna be in place or not. So with the controls. For this project, they didn't do any modifications at Eureka. To have. A, a device that's gonna communicate back the tank. They left it out because they thought, well, is Skater gonna come, Skater's gonna then close that loop. So. The instrumentation vendor, NIC, who's got the Skater project as well, he's do, he's the sub on this project. We're gonna need probably. Wright Pierce's guy estimated between five and ten, I was even thinking off the top of my head, it wouldn't be any more than fifteen, but. That might be another. Ten thousand add on there, so, um.
That'll come under Skater.
No, no, it'll come under this project, so. What, what I looked at, what I looked at was the contingency that we have.
That's the next question.
How are we doing with that?
We're doing okay, and actually.
Yeah, so we're checking the mail, so.
Actually, I mean, I summarized. And I'll explain what you're looking at here, if you wanna. Pass these down.
Good job.
Thank you.
So what I did here was kinda give you us a, a real brief summary, the total product that we authorized, twelve million two ninety oh five seven. That included the construction contract of, of nine, nine eighty eight, two fifty. And it also included the contingency, five percent of that construction number. Is four ninety nine, four thirteen, so. To date, we've got two hundred and six thousand. In change orders, if you look to the right, that reduces the contingency to two ninety three. We did the amendment for Wright Pierce. Of one thirty five. That reduces the contingency to one fifty eight. The four or five things I just talked about. Add up to twenty three. That brings the contingency down to one thirty four. The good news is, uh, on the pay items for the contract. There's a few items in there for like extra rock. There was a, there was an add-on for the, the foundation, if the foundation guy had to do some more work. Bottom line, there's about. Six or seven items that really we're not gonna get billed for, they're not gonna use them. Of about a hundred and forty five thousand. So that'll bump the contingency back up. To two seventy nine. So we're, we're in good shape with what we have approved. And what we're spending, and I, I tried to kinda at least cover the next couple of things, change order wise, and I think that it makes sense. The couple of change orders with the sidewalk, the valves. Um, you know, the device and the communication work that's gotta get done for Eureka. So that's where we're at, and just to let you know.
The only question I have.
Yeah.
This is the design-built building.
Sorry?
This is a design-built building by Wright Pierce, they designed it, we're building it.
Yeah, well, it's.
It's, it's, it's not a concern, it's not an architect, engineers, all guys doing all these drawings. Okay, because we had all these extra stuff to look at. I'm in English, it's crisis management, you go along, we gotta put, unpack this other way, we gotta do this, we gotta do that. Normally on construction sites, you get old man, and you look at all the estimates and look at everything. As we go along, we keep adding more and more. You know what I'm saying? Now. You have an engineer firm that's supposed to look at all this stuff. Right? And everything we turn out is crisis managed for something else, well, no, the pump station we had to put in. How much was the pump in, in this, in the chamber to get that water out? They shut the elevator, how much was that? When they shut the elevator? Yeah, when they shut that elevator, we had a, a sort of, how much was that?
I gotta look that.
I, I know, I appreciate you finding out because.
Yeah.
It's, it's, that's not a thing. I mean, that's not, that's an item that was, should have never happened.
Again, I'd have to look at all of them.
Listen, don't get me wrong, I'm not picking on you.
No, I know, I know.
I'm just saying, it's so easy to take this slush fund. And put it out to the project and take the liability off of somebody, which isn't that right?
Well, we'd have to look at all of them, I think a lot of them on, on those change orders, like for instance. If the sidewalk was included, his construction number probably would have been higher to cover it.
No question about it.
You know, the device up at Eureka, if it was included in the contract, the price would have been in there.
Right, but.
So I, I agree with you, certain things, like, like we added the PFAS piping.
Right.
That was like sixty grand, that was us asking for that, you're right, there's a couple of things here and there.
So I think basically what we should do, we haven't done it, is do a walkthrough. I was actually gonna suggest that, do that walkthrough and see what the hell's going on.
Oh, and anytime.
I was just, I was suggesting that we get a chance to walk through. Look at the accessibility, that maintenance, how you maintain it, how do you get up there, what do you do, we're not here to design it, but we have to maintain it.
Well, the only thing is, we haven't done all the startups, we haven't gotten all the training, so it's.
I'm not worried about the startups, I'm just, I'm looking at.
No, no, what I'm saying is, we don't know the maintenance yet until we deal with the vendors coming in and do the training and, and do the startups.
The question would have, would have walked through.
Then that walkthrough was just for. Oh, absolutely, you can have, yeah, the building's open every day.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean. We, we can do a walkthrough anytime you'd like.
Yeah. Is it better if we, if each individual just kinda schedules with you to go down?
Instead of, if you're available as a group, we can do it as a group.
We can do this as a special meeting prior to a regular meeting. Um, for who wants to go. Would you, like on June ten, July tenth, if you wanted to get together at, what, two thirty? Down there, spend a half hour and then come up here for the meeting at three thirty?
Oh, absolutely, you could do that, you got, I, I, I would encourage you guys to come in and look.
We're not here to design it, but we haven't seen it.
Okay.
And I'm saying.
You'd be here for July.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's still kind of a mess inside, but I mean, there's a lot more now to see than there was, say, four months ago.
I understand, I'm saying is. We, other than looking at the exterior, we have no idea, other than the original plan, your floor plan, you show where the tanks were circles.
Sure, sure.
That's what I never seen.
Oh, absolutely.
I was never thinking about it, probably about time to take a look and see what. I haven't had the opportunity, I was just in a few weeks ago.
By all means, by all, by all means.
We'll figure it out whether we do it individually.
And we could do it individually, I'm more than happy to go around with you.
It's more, more efficient for you to schedule them as possible.
Well, sure.
That's why I'll be around here around it too, so, we'll, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, let, let, let me know, and, um. Like I said, there's a lot more to see inside the building, the mechanical rooms being built. You, you know, a couple of the rooms are still a mess, the electrical room's not complete. But, um, the tank and the piping, the pumps, they're all in place, but the contractor's got equipment laying around and, yeah. The outside is starting to get put together, they've, they've been looming and seating, they've been grading, so.
The, uh, I assume to pump water, you use a piece of that electricity, right? Um, have we looked at putting solar on the building? Probably look at that as, I don't know.
I.
I don't have the height of it versus the trees versus.
I, I took it as kinda your site. Building, what, what committee is that, that's doing all of that?
We said, we actually.
I'd assume once it was built, I, I wouldn't get into it now and make any kinda change orders or anything like that for solar.
Maybe we should talk, we've been talking to a company about. When we do the high school roof. So maybe we look at. Obviously this is pretty much smaller project.
It might be the perfect project for a little.
It's got a southern exposure, it's, it's seventy feet long by probably, that half of the roof is seventy by thirty probably.
Yeah.
And if it's all on the same, I wonder. Cause then you had the court field and the baseball field, I wondered if. If you put it on a basis, that's gonna cover that, I don't like those.
That meter, that meter in that plant is gonna go zoom, 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 you, you're never gonna. Recoup a lot of solar on that.
Well, you'll, you'll cut into it, yeah.
Yeah, you're never gonna make it go.
My, my, my thought was, yeah, when the building is ours and we're utilizing it, I, I would have thought we, I would present going back to that committee that does the solar for us.
Yeah, the committee right now is.
Public site with.
Well, you know, the other, the other thing is, from the, uh. Yeah, from the utility commission perspective, question is, should we be looking for one of those small nuclear reactors? And start selling electricity to the town, that's what they're saying. It's a good way to fund it.
What do you have about you this?
That's your one course.
We got Chris, he'll do it. Alright, um, is that all?
Um, yeah, so that, that's really where we're at, so I was gonna go ahead and authorize those change orders unless I hear objections to it.
I was gonna say, we wanna go ahead and make a motion, so, uh.
I'll make a motion that we approve the change orders submitted by. Our engineer here.
Um, and, and I'll give a friendly amendment to the amount of twenty three thousand three hundred and seventy eight dollars, is that correct? Okay, that's accepted, so I'll second the motion.
No, well.
Okay, any other special on that? All in favor, say aye, aye, motion carries, Tom, thank you.
Yeah, no, I, I do have, I, I. Okay, you, you mentioned about the fence in the back. Um. How much fencing are they putting in the front from the, the building? Because I was down there one night when the, you know, they, they use that for the baseball.
Yep.
Build there.
Yep.
You know. If I had my way today, if I knew where the building would stay, I would have recommended the building was built back in the wood sport. So they maintain some of that parking for the baseball there.
The, the.
So the minimum. Fencing that would.
There's, there's no fencing in front of the building.
Oh, okay.
They're coming off the side with a slide gate and a slide gate, then they're going around the tank and they're going around the town.
Yeah, that's just up there just temporarily.
Yeah, so you'll have access rights to the face of the building.
Great.
The, the chemical fill stations are there, but they're gonna be lockable.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
I didn't want to see the fence.
No, no, twenty feet out in front, yeah, no, no, we're not stealing any more of the property.
And there's bollards or whatever to prevent, uh.
I don't know.
Student drivers from coming through the building.
I don't know that there's bollards there, Dino, honestly, I, I think there's bollards over by the hydrants, there's bollards over by the recycle, there's, um. Electrical gear. And, uh, the well and the, and the hydrants are together, there's a couple of bollards there, I don't think we have anything lined in front of the building, we don't.
It might be a fence, a amount of fence, but guardrail. See what it looks like.
Okay. Uh, PFAS, I think?
Nothing new.
Okay, waters, uh, water supervisor. Did I, oh, I'm sorry, I did.
I kinda loved, most of my director's report where it was gonna be worse about the diversion permit and, and Berkstrom, so I just.
Thank you. Utility supervisor.
Uh, this past month, we had, uh, we had one service leak at the Dog's building, the one they just redid, it was on their side, uh, they gotta take care of it within a time of crashing.
Uh, which building?
The Dog's, I think it's one. Seven, um. Yeah, they tied it to the listing line, and I think where they made the transition is where it started, right, the engine built. Uh, that was on then. Uh, as for the wells, our transfer switch, this is the Maple Avenue wells, the transfer switch is not working. Uh, automatically, uh, if we have to, if the generator comes on, there's a good chance it won't switch over. Uh, if so, right now, we have to call Cannondale to come and physically do it. But we've got a, uh, transfer switch on order, it's supposed to be here, uh, tomorrow. Hopefully tomorrow morning, uh, the contractor, Schmidt Electric, is gonna take a look at it, make sure what we need. And there's a good chance that may be changed out, uh, next week, just so long as they see what needs to be done, but this is the transfer switch right in, in the building for the generator.
This is Maple Avenue?
Yes.
I thought we put a new transfer switch in there when we did the new wells and stuff.
We, we did, but it was for, it just that we had to activate. When, when everything was being done, if we had a good. We couldn't do, uh. Was it two and two way? We couldn't do them together, but we had a generator set up with a transfer switch that we could put two on. If, if we needed that second well to supply us. When the well is being redeveloped.
When, when you did the redo, when you did the new wells in twenty seventeen, that, that transfer switch wasn't replaced then.
Yeah.
That's, I think, the nineteen nineties, that switch. And I guess they, Cannondale looked at it. Couple of months ago, three, four months ago.
Yeah.
And parts, the, the transfer switches now, if they're that old, you can't get the parts for them, so I think he had to open the cabinet up and with a screwdriver, we're, we're not, we're not gonna be doing that, so.
So I, I could say.
He used to give you a little handle there.
Oh, it's, there's one in there. Like a big wrench that slides over.
So you just can't have the, uh. You know, Duluka go in there and repair my gloves?
He probably would, he probably would. But, uh, that was the wells bad, like I said, that should be taken care of by next month's meeting. Uh, we started a leak survey. People looking at the Chestnut Ridge side. Um, they found a couple of service leaks, one on the customer side, I, I just got notified of one of them that they found. And there's actually a surface leak up at the top of Midway, serviced. So, we're, uh, and that's all due to the act of automatic protection problem we have up there where the copper is robbing where it looks under the gas. Um, Berkstrom, actually the guys have been working diligently to, to get everything done there, with filling the, filling the, the tanks, watching the wells, make sure we're not dropping wells down. We probably spent a good week there, you know, trying to fill the main without taxing the system, and then flushing it with the coronation. Uh, it actually, the whole thing worked out very well in that week. Uh, I had major, major concerns about air in the line and not being able to get out. And, um, it, it worked, I mean, we had to do a little extra flushing, don't get me wrong, but, uh. It, everything passed, so as Tom said in his report, everything passed, so that's, that's great.
Kelly's guys worked great, Kovacs worked with us great, and, and it worked out well to get everything done.
And we never, it never affected what we had going on at night, we made sure the three tanks got filled up. And we kept an eye on those tanks the whole time while we were filling the main, and, and we were. It was the most we were putting in, about maybe a hundred and fifty, but we averaged under a hundred that we were, were taking from our system into it. And we did it all by the book, taken from one hydrant to the other through a meter and a, uh, backflow device. That, that worked out very well. Um, Midway update, the two, uh. Two customers that had all the issues, we're getting close to the end on that, uh. I talked with, uh, Eight A, she's still got a couple of things she's concerned about. But, uh, we pretty much, we cleaned the front of the house, we had the garage doors checked, anything that she has. Um, we pretty much have addressed number six, A, the one that got the most water. Um, we've got a contractor that's committed to the, uh, do the sheet rock, he's gonna get a square footage for the carpet, and he's planning on starting July, so. Right after the fourth of July.
Was there anything else to do in there, because I mean, we went back and forth, the sheet rocker said. He doesn't do electrical, doesn't do plumbing, doesn't, we didn't need any of those things, right?
No, electrical wise, there was one box. No, electrical wise, there was one box and it was a new work box that just needed to be reinstalled in the sheet rock.
Okay.
He can take care of that, he's got a guy that does flooring. We just got to get the square footage, talked to her. I, I did text back and forth with Sharon Palmer this morning. And she's, she's kind of like, whatever's cheaper for, or flooring, excuse me, or carpet, but there's a couple of doors, there's one door that got damaged. That has to be a fire-rated door, so that has to be changed out, there's a couple sliding doors.
Okay.
But we're, we're on our way with, with those two. You can't blame them.
Sure.
They're, they're inconvenienced. Luckily, the guy, Randy, his name is, I can't think of the last name right now.
Gorg, Gorgies or something?
Yeah, yeah. He's done work for the town. The person that lives in six A, the tenant, works at Rings End and Randy's in there every day. So I asked for permission if we could work through Randy, through this, this gentleman at Rings End to get in and out of the house, and she was fine.
Okay.
So we're, we're in a good way, she actually was civil with me.
Good.
Civil back.
Good, oh man, I got a caller in Ohio or to call from like.
Yeah, you're good now, yeah, we're, we're good now.
I'm not be good, but you're good.
Car part one, you know, that we're, we, we put in sixty thousand for a new generator. We're going to take down the building, do a little change in the, the fencework. All the controls are still, they're, they're probably six years old. So we're not concerned with changing the controls or the pumps or anything like that, that's all been done in the past five years. Even the rails of the pumps go on, those have been replaced with stainless steel rails. So it's really just going to be the generator, the demo, the garage, and of course, the, the shed, and of course, of course, the transfer switch. So hopefully, when we're all said and done, it'll just go to this car part two. Sewer issue on Oakland Heights. I originally would, they had a problem, they, they had a blockage, we looked at it, we cambered the main, we flushed the main. Our main was clear, finally had a camera one more time and look right up the lateral, and there's a rough mass in there. I was afraid that when we put this, the water main in five, six years ago, and maybe they healed the bucket through and crushed all out of it. But it doesn't appear to be that, it, it appears to be, so that's on the customer, we've got that all, another fire put out. Paying is going to start on Wallyville next week. I did hear Monday, now I heard Wednesday. One of the guys, we put risers, they're just going to do a two-inch overlay on, on Wallyville, and then they're doing Sky Edge. And then it'll be downtown here, and I'm, I'm not sure what the schedule is downtown, but we've got enough, you know, I do need to order a few more risers. We've got, we, we still have enough rises from Stony Hill from the project. We're, we're down to almost none, but we've got enough just to show, to finish Wallyville. But other than that, that's where we're at, and I, I gave you the MIU, that's, that's worth going on.
Good.
Other than that, that's all we got.
I think I sent a message over you, I, at the public site, sorry, the zoning meeting this week. We had some complaints about Saxon Avenue and the flooding, I guess, and it's a sewer issue down there, so I just, you guys want to take a look at it at some point?
Yes, I, I did go out there that morning after you sent the email.
Okay.
It's flowing, so, and with the heavy rain that we got. I mean, it's always, there's always a flooding issue down there. And what, what the, the main does, it cuts into the woods, it goes through Pulaski's property. And there's three or four manholes in there, they're just, we don't know where they are because it's sort of thrown in there. But I'm, I'm monitoring the water going through, it appears to be a bait backup, or if there's a backup on the other side on Hudson. We're, we're monitoring, we're watching.
So when it floods, there's nothing we can really do down there?
No, no, what I understand, there used to be a swamp in there, it used to take all the water. Slowly got filled in.
Well, I think they, I think the lumber company filled some of it in.
Yeah.
And then over time.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a real problem, yeah, that, you know, that area is bad.
Manholes have to be raised so the water is not going in?
It's not a bad idea, actually.
You know, the whole road goes underwater.
Problem is the street.
You know, I mean, yeah, I mean.
The manhole, the manhole is up far enough up, it's by like six, it's almost.
You know, that's, that's what I didn't understand, Dan. Number six is up at the intersection.
Yeah.
But the lowest point of that road is at number twenty-nine, and that's where there's an open line where it goes into Pulaski's property.
The man, but the manhole, if it's in behind Pulaski's property, and that all fills in and the water comes up and it comes up. Maybe that's where the sewage comes from, that's from Pulaski power, property back to the street.
It could be, we're, we're, you know, we're going to keep an eye on it.
Cool. Thank you. Is there any other business to come before the commission?
Before National Road. Fifty-four National Road.
Yeah.
I went to the guy's house, he's got a broken wheel, and I shot up inside the house, there's a meter pad out by the road, it's covered with all kinds of woods. You, you would never find unless you knew where the wood pile was.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So we're having a problem with a few of those, but it's a.
I gotta pull it, I gotta shut, I gotta shut. Maybe you can change it when we do it, you know?
Usually fifty-four in your.
Yeah, there's a meter pad right there.
Fifty-four.
Yeah, fifty-four in Ashbrook, yeah. You can't miss it, there's a bunch of broken.
Okay.
All right, I'll let you know.
One other question, I have sprinkler system on this commercial building. Shouldn't that hydrant be a blow-off, it's, it's a dead-end line? It's a sprinkler line that never moves unless the head broke off. Right?
See, yeah, I, see, I, I have mixed emotions on that. Being in the fire department for forty-five years, the last thing I want is a hydrant at the end of the line. I want the hydrant weighing in. You, you know what I mean, to, to put a hydrant at the end of the line, that's all, so this is a glorified blow-off. So, so something like that, you can put a two-inch wrench valve in there and use that for a blow-off, just to get the water moving. But, and, and that's why I'm so adamant that I don't want the domestic lines on the fire lines.
I can't do it.
Fire line, your fire, there's, there's a lot of that in this town that was allowed over the years.
Years ago, they allowed you to do it.
But the thing is, you're dealing with stagnant water sitting in the, in the sewer line, I mean, in the sprinkler line. At least this way, you've got fresh water going to the people. Usually I ask for hydrant on the way in. But it's not my call, it's Tommy's call. And, and he kind of understands my rationale as to why I don't think a hydrant needs to be at the end, unless you're using it for a blow-off, and that's a three-thousand-dollar blow-off.
They generally put it at the end of a building, but they usually do. The problem is the sprinkler line is always lower than the domestic anyways.
Yeah.
They ask because it's a stagnant line, it's got to be about fifty-nine inches down, yeah.
But that was, again, that's up to Tommy, what, what he would want, but I mean, I, I have a, a thought why I wouldn't put a hydrant at the end, I could have blow-off.
That's what I'm saying, I'm saying a blow-off, yeah, to move it, yeah.
Oh, the flushing hydrant, what's the, that's not considered a blowing or off?
It is, but it's a five-hundred-dollar blow-off compared to a three-thousand-dollar hydrant.
Well, we're not to dwell on, but we call it right now, we're human, we're going to hydrate the town. Question out, open up first before you get into it.
And that's even just, usually just the branch line.
Yeah.
You know, everybody, they see the truck, but they don't realize that water is from this, that's sitting in the hydrant now, from the, the main valve to the hydrant itself. It's only five feet of water, but it may take three minutes to clear. You don't want that going into your pump either.
Okay, because you're inviting a new pump. All right.
All right, we accept the motion to adjourn. All right, all favor? Aye. We stand adjourned at four fifty P M, thank you.
Thank you.